Are you thinking you need to help?
Yeah.
Anything I can do?
Just pray for me.
About the agency, yeah.
All right, we're out. We're going. All right, good morning. So we do have a quorum, so I'll declare a quorum, call the meeting to order. And our first order of business, I remember two is prayer from our chaplain.
Thank you, sir. I meant to ask you before the meeting, and I didn't, so I seek your to ask to give us some permission. May I, as it were, stand and will recite the pledge. And then we will remain standing for the Lord's Prayer. Our Father. Oops. I pledge allegiance to the Lord, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, Father, we just come to you, Lord, in Jesus' name, and, Father, we thank you for you giving us another great day. Father, we appreciate the counting that we have. We appreciate all the county workers, Father, even the volunteers. We thank you, and we ask your blessings. We pray that you would give wisdom, Lord, to those today, especially this morning in this meeting. You'd give them wisdom and guidance in their heart, Lord, about the power of the Holy Spirit, or guide to moving directions that you would have them go. Father, we pray for our community that you keep, and our county, when state is, for it's that goes, that you keep coronavirus away and that it be done. Father, we thank you, and we now say together the prayer, the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us to stay our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not to temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thy kingdom, the power, and glory forever. Amen. And may the Lord bless you and keep you, cause his face to shine upon you, and give you peace and Jesus' name.
Thank you, David. I understand you do that nearly often enough. All right, item number three, citizens' comments. I don't have any citizens signed up to speak today. Item number four is consideration approval of minutes for May 26, 2020.
I would make the motion to approve the minutes if needed.
Here we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. All right, item number five, a consideration and approval of any treasures or auditors or forces needed. Anything? Item number six. Consideration approval payment of any bills this meeting. I can come back to that one for you, too. So we have a motion and a second. Pay the bills and further discussion. All in favor? Motion passes. Number seven is our consent agenda. City Brownwood Water, or seven A, the City Brownwood Water Department. Consideration of possible action regarding the law enforcement center here. I understand we've got a problem.
Mr. Henry Wheat, Director of City Brownwood.
I'm sorry, I didn't get you.
Henry Wheat.
W E E D?
I E D.
W E E D?
I E D. W E I I E D.
We'll get it in a minute.
Yeah, we have a meter that furnishes water for the law enforcement center. It's in offer. We need to replace it. They installed that water line and meter to that facility. They put it all over the country. Not outside the country. So what I'm proposing, and there's a map in front of you, Google Earth map. And there's the existing location up against the building. It's a red line. It's the water line that's under the concrete. And we're proposing to ninety that line over into the grass with a new meter box. The meter, we can work on it in the future. Cut the concrete, put the concrete back. But that does have an end cut where that water line is in the future. If there's any problems with that water line right there, we can assist and repair it. But it does get the meter out of.
Henry, could you just speak a little bit louder, please?
Yeah. Do we rehash that?
Where's your water line? Is it just going to come from down here?
It's going to come, yeah, that grass area the water line is in.
It's already in here?
Yeah, moves around that building.
Is that something that's on the county on part of this?
So in the other piece of paper that you have, the second page, the county and the city have an agreement currently that designates portions, responsibility in that email. I guess it's referring back to the original agreement between the city and the county.
So this says the county's portion is $6,079? Or is it?
Yes, sir.
And the city's portion would be?
The remainder of that.
The remainder. Okay. And the meter has failed? We don't have water at the jail?
No, we have water.
Sheriff's saying that we have water.
Yeah, you have water, but the meter is inoperable. The water's going through it.
No.
We're just averaging.
You're not leading. So it's not metering the water? Okay. So it's not, because jail standards reported here, and I'm thinking that if there's no water at the jail, we wouldn't have that report. Wouldn't it pass?
I'm sure it already would have knocked the hole in the concrete.
Yeah.
In the water.
Okay.
Well. Sheriff, have any comments on this?
This is news to me. That's the first I've heard of any issue.
Well, I guess we're not getting free water, but we're getting estimated water charges at this time. Well. Just doing these costs, we're kind of doing lovely, because if y'all don't know what we're in, why should we?
Yeah, we would. We proposed to do this.
Post to the word. Yeah, you consider a cheap deal to put a water meter into the other place. It was pretty expensive, I would tell.
Yes, it was. It was twenty thousand. But it had a lot more.
It does.
It was a little cornball.
Yeah, I'm not. I'm savvy enough to understand. This looks like a reasonable amount of work. I look at the reasonable charges here, so I would probably be open to taking forward the person.
Yeah, those prices are not marked up.
That looks like.
We purchase this stuff.
We wouldn't go outside. We just want to be cheaper than on the plane. Are you looking for a motion here?
I am.
Where are we going to pay for this from? Would that be out of the? TMC or building payer fund or whatever?
And how much you left in there?
Well, on the cash, they have their.
I would move, we accept, or we go ahead with the repairing or replacing the water meter at the law enforcement center, and the payment to come out of the contingency fund. So.
That's where I was going with that. So I'll take a second. I'll take that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussions? All in favor? Thank you. Appreciate you. Next one is item number seven B, which is Commissioner Kelton, consideration and approval regarding action on an emergency. And I have an order here lifting it, if you want to do that.
I talked to some of our local guys, and they're not really lifted yet, although I thought we're over. I guess we're not. I think. He's not in place of lifting it yet.
Yeah, I'm in favor of it staying in place.
So there'll be no action on that?
No action.
All right, so item number seven B is also Commissioner Kelton, I'm sorry, seven C. Commissioner Kelton regarding the COVID-19 outbreak and any daily changes that need to be discussed. And I don't believe that we have anything other than Lisa. Come on up, Lisa.
There were some changes over the last week.
Yeah, this is the authorities.
Good morning. And Lisa did, from County Health Department. Just kind of a summary of what's been going on the last week to ten days. Previously, we just had one nursing home facility that most of our cases seemed to be from, with a few scattered on community based. So now we began testing through National Guard, all of the nursing home facilities. And so over this past weekend, all of those have been tested for the whole county. So early last week, we got a second nursing home that had test results, and in those results, there was one positive employee. And that was reported maybe Tuesday last week. And then just from other testing because of maybe, I think it was because of a move within a nursing home, there was a second positive from a third nursing home about midweek last week. And so now we've changed from everything from one facility to we have two others that have a controllable, but they do have cases. So over this next week, what we're expecting is to get results back from the testing that occurred this past weekend. And that will, for me, will kind of determine what position we're in. It gives us a little bit of a better idea what position our community is in.
So we've taken a lot more tests. Are percentages going down, up? I mean, percentage wise, whatever?
Percentage wise, per number of tests that we're doing, then the percentage of positives is going down. We've also received a pretty sizable amount of testing from preoperative testing from our hospital. And I'm assuming that that will continue just because they're being very precautionary, making sure that we're not bringing individuals into the hospital that are positive. So I think if that's a good thing, we're doing the right things with that, that it will increase our numbers as far as number of tests, and hopefully we'll hold the number of cases down. So right now, we're sitting at fifty-eight.
And active, currently active?
Um, we are, we have some that are in the nursing facilities are still in isolation, so those are going to be active cases. They haven't been removed from that. I think there may be sixteen, fifteen, or sixteen. And then all of the active cases that we were following had dropped off, except for those that we, that were positive last week. So that would be the two. Two.
Two.
So. I encourage everyone to continue to be precautionary and thoughtful of others, because we're not sick doesn't mean that we can't spread it to other people. So I just want us to remain vigilant and be mindful of others, distancing, masks if you're going to be closer than six feet away from each other, especially if it's people that we're not usually around. Washing your hands, all those things are really important. Thank you all. Do you have other questions or?
Yes, there's not. We still don't know that you're allowed to tell us anything. Maybe we've had it, but had it, never knew it. Is there anything to that? Are there a lot that we already had and never realized?
That's kind of what my assumption is, is that we've had lots of people that were tested that were not symptomatic. And so we're assuming that that is kind of how it silently spreads. And is that, no, I may get it and everything is fine, but then I may give it to somebody else that has a more not as strong immune system, and then they have symptoms, and it could turn something really serious. So yes, I think that you're right.
There's still no talk about doing the tests to see if you may have already had it. Now they talked about that a while, but there wasn't a good way to quickly do that.
Um, well, the test that they have is not very viable, and so the percentages of false positives was pretty high. And so then the other thing is, is that we're not sure that you have a true immunity. So maybe you could catch it again. It's kind of, the assumption would be that you build immunity like you do with other diseases, and then you don't get it again. But we have some diseases like flu that you might get another strand. And so once you get it, doesn't mean that you will never get it again. And so we're not really sure where that is now, so we're not, we're thinking that the cost of doing that test overall would not be effective, and we might not give us the right information for what we're looking for.
So just to be clear, you're not needing any action from this court today?
No, sir. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. So item number B is consideration approval of any actions needed regarding the COVID-19 outbreak. I don't believe there is any. All right, so item number E is the sheriff, consideration of hospital authorization to adjust the courthouse staffing while the COVID-19 procedure is in place to include discussion on best practices for supplying an employee to the courthouse for screening.
And I guess you all are all aware that the new policies and procedures take effect today with all of the city court administrators. So my concern is me having the staffing to assure that everybody that comes into this courthouse is going to be COVID-free, basically, or not showing symptoms. You know, I have the courthouse security deputies. Their security personnel. And I think if we have them start doing medical screening, then that's going to take away from their security details. I don't know if y'all have noticed today, but I had one of my jail staff out there doing the questionnaires as required. You know, I'm not paying overtime to that person. Right now, our just numbers are down. So I was able to utilize one of the employees from the jail. But that's not always going to be the case. You know, we may be short on the sheriff or something. My initial plan is where to have the jail staff come over here and take care of the situation. Or talking to the judge, he thinks there may be some COVID funds, where we can hire part-time personnel to take care of the screening issues. Right now, we're not having any court other than right here. But when we start moving to the Coliseum or other locations, then there's no way that I'm going to be able to staff personnel to do this without paying overtime or without hiring somebody with the COVID funds. So that's what I wanted to discuss with Commissioner's Board this morning, to see if we could come up with some type of plan for the screening of court proceedings.
Can you pay overtime with the COVID funds or do you have to have an employee for that?
I would pay overtime.
Pay overtime with it?
I'm not sure how that works, but that's my understanding. So that's the issues that I'm facing.
Well, just to be quite honest and frank, I think Judge Ellis is way optimistic about having court proceedings going forward, because there are too many hurdles to pass. Now, we have okay, the use of the Coliseum, use of anything on HPU campus, and the Lyric Theater as alternate sites. Those can be utilized, and like you said, you're going to have to, by law, they have to be sheriff's deputies. They can't be what, private security firm or whatever. And I don't think there's a private security firm in the county anyway. But yes, we would have to have deputies at any location outside the courthouse to perform security and screening. Because the plan says, or the one I've read says deputies have to perform the screening. And we've had an offer from Ranger College that they could help with the screening. But I don't know if we can utilize them if there's not a deputy present.
Working under the scope of the deputy?
Yes. So there is a big personnel problem. Not problem, but hurdles to jump, and they're not just regular low and intermediate hurdles. They're very high ones. But I think that as Judge Lilly had mentioned to you, there's some COVID funds available to pay for deputies overtime or off time.
And that's the issue that I'm facing now. I've got two deputies that are waiting to go to the department, so I won't be too short on my deputy staffs. The fact that you is, it's a difficult situation.
Yes. What about our jail crew deputies? I mean, I guess it's still there. They're there, but. Yeah, I don't know when, as Commissioner Trevitt's saying, you can let jail crews out of the jail to go work our road crew. I don't know when that's, is that.
That's true. I can't get a firm answer from anybody. That's why I've come up.
So there's four deputies there that could go somewhere else anyway. I mean, we're working, we're working them, but still. But there's four that could help out in whatever situation you need them to be in.
Absolutely, if you're all willing to, you know.
Yeah, I think, hello, I would. Because, you know, and they're, they're already there, they're already here, so.
Short term, I know we can figure how long we're talking.
Well, yeah.
Well, at present, we're just having JP Court. Nobody else has scheduled anything that I don't know. So we're still waiting on our thermometers to come in that we ordered in the moment they were told that they had to get them. But they're not here yet, but we are doing the questionnaire. And again, JP is starting the conviction process, but other than that, the county court of all, the county court and district board haven't scheduled anything, I know.
The deputy screening this morning, he has a P I O and L.
Right, that's one we have at the jail.
No, because I brought them.
Thank you, sir.
We've ordered two for the courthouse. And once they announced they needed those, everybody went out and wore them.
I've got three of them.
Are they something special, or are they just temperature gun? Are these specific?
No contact temperature.
Well, they make temperature guns for commercial use in plumbing and refrigeration and all the other aspects. I don't know if they're sensitive enough to use on humans to check.
Actually.
The one I've got, I've got one, and the one I've got is not, so.
We have a couple of them, and we did some testing with them. They're not as accurate as.
That's what I found with mine.
I never tried mine.
So can we continue utilizing the jail staff right now until until we have a firm court date scheduled in the future?
Yes, as long as I have the staff, if you notice.
Well, but what I need to do today is I need to, I need the court to okay paying his jail staff, the staffing that out of the COVID funds, so that it's a cost to the sheriff, money out of his budget.
And that was my question, was if you had to hire one here at overtime, would you charge him at the overtime rate? That's what you had to do.
Or even the, yeah, or even the straight rate if they're assigned here as someplace that they wouldn't normally be assigned.
Are there some that are willing to come do it overtime if we need to, or be talking to them?
Oh, yes, I'm good for about ten days. It's looking. I have assignment sheets back there, and I've had it a couple of weeks trying to get the position filled here at the courthouse. So we'd be ready to go this morning. You know, you never know what's going to happen.
Right, and like I said, we do have a jail crew. I say jail crew, or what crew, chalers. I guess it needs to be, are we utilizing ours every day right now? Y'all put us out there, that's really what we got to do. I'll do what I got to do.
Yeah, that'd be great. I appreciate that offer. And honestly, I never even thought about those four individuals.
If they need to, you need to utilize them somewhere to bring one of those chalers over. It's more against first than using the equipment, because they're using it every day probably now. They know how to, then that's fine. It's fine with me.
And I appreciate that, because that does give me more options to stand.
Gives you four more options, so. We got to do what we got to do, and we get this.
Okay.
Well, if they're existing employees, then no, then we're good to go, because we've already accepted the COVID money. If they're existing employees, if we want, after, if after the ten days coming up, we either discuss it now or revisit it in ten days. Eventually, he's not, well, I guess if we are, we're going to utilize the four additional. So right now, no, we're good to go. I just, we need to keep track of when you assign someone over here, so I make sure that that money is paid, transferred back to you.
Can you kind of keep us, so we kind of have a, like, my head was happening.
We have special times to fill out any COVID related.
If you see yourself running out of coming into a bind, use the four road crew deputies, please. If you can't, give us notice so we can get a solution for you. All right, so we'll need no action on item number seven E, so seven F is also the sheriff consideration and authorization of purchase of acoustic wall panels. I'm assuming this is for the Zoom meeting room in the jail?
Yes, it's actually the, what we use as a. Yes, it's actually the, what we use as a magistration room. And I know those, y'all have been back in the jail. The acoustics are just horrible back there. It just continues rumbling and echoing. We tried doing the Zoom in that room initially and Judge Ellis had issues with the sound. So I've talked to y'all before about getting acoustics put up in the jail a couple of years ago. But for this individual room, I've got estimates for two different types of acoustic panels. One of them being fifty-eight hundred and one of them being sixty-seven hundred dollars. And the difference is just the thickness. Talking with the architect, I can get by, it's certainly good to have the thinner panels. So what I'd like to do is purchase the panels to put inside that magistration room where we can solve the acoustic issues in there. And the price for that is five thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. There's a thousand and twenty-eight dollar installation fee on top of that, but I believe we can do that ourselves to save a thousand dollars. So I'd like authorization to purchase those one and one-eighth thick panels from RHS Construction Services out of the Metroplex.
Are we doing this to, because of COVID-19? Is that a COVID-19 related cost of authorization?
That's what actually is making us do it, but this has been an issue we've been needing to do since the jail was built. Actually, with the Zoom meetings.
COVID is requiring.
I'm sorry?
COVID is requiring.
Right, well, I think there's something, if we're going on account of COVID and our money for that, for that fund, I don't know if we're running a sense of what it is asking?
Yes, actually, we could. If any one judge uses it because of that, and I'm not on the magistration rotation, I sure would. But I don't know if any of the JPs would, well, I guess they haven't yet because it's not set up.
Right, and we actually tried that video magistration back in, I don't know, three or four years ago. And we have the same problem with the acoustics. That's pretty much why we don't use it. And this would also solve that problem with the video magistration.
I'd make the motion that we would purchase these with maybe through the COVID-19 funds. If that's acceptable.
Yeah, I could verify that we can do this one. I don't see a problem.
I do have the money and my operations budget at this point to cover the initial cost and hopefully we can get some reimbursement.
I can, I'll double check it, but I don't anticipate a problem.
I second. Much.
We have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor? All right, that is. Item number seven G is also the sheriff consideration and authorization to accept donations to the sheriff's office.
What I have is a check from one of his body shop and the amount is sixty dollars. Sixty dollars. And I'll tell you all how this is coming about. He has those old vehicles that require police officer certification in order him, in order for him to dispose of them. So every time we go do that for him, he's donating money to my office.
I move we allow the sheriff to accept donation from Mr. Flavins.
Motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Passes, and last is your shotting jail report. They have a copy of the letter from.
Actually, I haven't got mine yet, so I'll have to read one of y'all's.
Thank you, Bob.
While he's reading that, I want to publicly thank the rest of the commissioners all over Shaw out here for them. Let me use one of their hands on one of their trucks this week for two days to move parts for the bridges out. Couldn't have done it without them, so thank y'all for your help.
Oh, the jail report, I have 142 inmates, eight of them have contracts. That's all I have, gentlemen.
And just for the record, I did receive another inspection from the jail commission and is with the passport, thanks for shouting, calling. Very proud of the sheriff.
It is the staff we have, I guarantee.
That's to the manager, please. The sheriff.
He just came in Friday.
You can have mine.
Well, it just came in in regular mail, so I've made a copy of it for him this morning. And as far as that inspection, I want to commend my jail staff. It's two years in a row we've done a regular inspection. And it's mostly because people have run into jail.
All of the kitchen, kitchen area is still functioning well enough today.
Yes, sir.
They enjoy it, or they like what they saw.
Inmates not getting frozen sandwiches, so we're good here.
All right, thank you. Thank y'all. That was the last time I was here, so we don't need to.
Next Monday.
June the eighth.
All right.
Fireworks need to be on there.
All right, so we will meet or we will come back for a new meeting again June eighth of Hartley, Hartley, Tardy, June.
It is.
And I'll, rest of the jury, thank you.